Hello and welcome to Health and Safety Induction Training for Contractors, Longford County Council Housing Projects. The section objectives for today will include: Introducing you to Longford County Council; The arrangements for safety, health and welfare; The role of the client; PSDP and PSCS; And the duties of you as contractors. Cover critical safety information and procedures, particularly in the event of an emergency, such as reporting accidents and incidents, first aid arrangements, evacuation procedures and site rules. The Safety, Health and Welfare Act 2005 is the main piece of health and safety legislation in Ireland that employers must work to. It outlines the employer's duties which include: Managing and conducting their activities to ensure safety and health; Preventing improper conduct likely to put employees at risk, such as bullying or horseplay; Providing information, instruction, training and supervision necessary in a form, manner and language likely to be understood. They must identify hazards, prepare risk assessments, prepare a safety statement and determine and implement safety measures. They must report accidents after three-day absence and any dangerous occurrences to the Health and Safety Authority. They must obtain the services of competent person to advise on health and safety and all duties apply to temporary and fixed-term employees. Ensure that working conditions will protect these employees. The duties of employees are also outlined in the act. They must comply with the law and take reasonable care of their own safety and that of others. They must not be under the influence of any intoxicant that endangers them or others. If refused, they be requested by the employer, they must submit to tests for drugs or alcohol. They must cooperate with employers on issues of health and safety. They must not engage in improper conduct. They must attend prescribed training and undergo any reasonable assessments. And having had the training, they must make correct use of articles, substances and PPE. They must also report dangerous work defects and any contraventions to health and safety.
The Role of the Client in a Construction Project. So now you've finally decided to start that building project. Here are a few things you need to take a note of. Whether you're building a house or extension, a new milking shed or even a factory, you are now a client and with this come legal obligations and responsibilities. But don't worry, it's not complicated. Once you employ competent professionals to begin the work and carry it through to completion, well then everything will come together in a construction that meets your needs and fulfills your legal requirements. It really is simple. First, no matter what size your project is, assure yourself that the people you are using are qualified, competent and have adequate resources, be they an architect, an engineer or a builder. If your project is going to take longer than thirty working days or five hundred person days, there are three things that you as the client must do. You must notify the Health and Safety Authority about the project before design begins. You must also appoint two project supervisors for the design and construction phases of the project. The two project supervisors must also be appointed when there is more than one contractor on the project or where particular risks exist. These appointments must be done in writing. You should make any relevant information you may have available, including the safety file to the project supervisors for review. Complying with these sensible rules is simple, uncomplicated and intended to keep you and your project safe. It means that all employees working on the project and any members of the public or family who may be using the building can do so with the confidence that all matters of safety and health have been covered and the final structure is fit for purpose. So rest assured, it's easy and it makes sense. For more information visit hsa.ie and bsmart.ie. The Role of the Project Supervisor for the Design Process. You've been appointed the project supervisor for the design process of a construction project. This role is known in short as the PSDP. Clients must appoint a PSDP when a project is going to take longer than thirty working days or five hundred person days to complete, when there is more than one contractor or if particular risks exist. So what does this mean for you? It means you're responsible for the safety and health of the design elements of the project, from planning to completion. In order to do this successfully, you need to be a competent professional in construction design. When you take on this role, you need to make sure you have all of the resources in place to do your job properly. Once these resources are in place, your key responsibilities will involve making sure the design of the project is safe, both during construction and when the structure is in use after completion. You must prepare a preliminary safety and health plan which will be used by the project supervisor for the construction stage, clearly outlining how to reduce design risks in the construction phase of the project. Your role will involve coordinating the design of the build with both permanent and temporary works designers and upon completion of the project, you'll prepare the safety file to give to the client. By identifying, eliminating or reducing potential safety and health risks, your role as the project supervisor for the design process plays an extremely important part in ensuring the safety of all involved in the project, both during its construction and into the future life of the structure. For more information visit hsa.ie and bsmart.ie. The Role of the Project Supervisor for the Construction Stage. So you've been appointed the project supervisor for the construction stage of a project to oversee all safety and health on the construction site. This role is known in short as the PSCS. Clients must appoint a PSCS when a project is going to take longer than thirty working days or five hundred person days, when there is more than one contractor on site or where particular risks exist, such as working at height, working in deep excavations or near high voltage power lines. So as PSCS, what does this mean for you? You need to be a competent professional in construction with a good working knowledge and the resources needed to plan, manage and bring the project to a successful completion. Once the resources have been identified and are in place, the next thing you need to do is to get a copy of the preliminary safety and health plan from the client and use this as a basis to develop your construction stage, safety and health plan. Once this has been done and the plan implemented, you'll then need to monitor how well it's working and make any necessary changes to it. As the PSCS on the project, one of your key responsibilities will be to secure the site so that the public can't access it. This will ensure that only authorised workers with Safe Pass and CSCS cards are on site. You will also make sure that each visitor or worker will complete the site-specific safety induction before being given access to the site. If you're the PSCS on a project that has more than twenty workers, you will need to make sure that a site safety representative is in place. Suitable welfare facilities such as toilets, canteen and drying rooms must be available to workers. Your role is also that of a coordinator, working with both contractors and the project supervisor for the design process to ensure a safe working environment for everyone. By providing a secure and safe construction environment, you play a crucial role in the safety of all involved in the construction stage of the project. For more information visit hsa.ie and bsmart.ie. The General Duties of Contractors in Construction. A contractor is any employer whose employees carry out or manage construction work and this also includes sole traders and self-employed workers. So now that you have identified that you are a contractor, you have a range of duties that you must comply with, such as identifying hazards and eliminating or reducing risks during construction while planning, managing and supervising all work that needs to be carried out and incorporating appropriate measures to protect persons who may be affected and ensuring adequate resources are available. You must also prepare and have available appropriate site-specific information, including risk assessments, safety statement for your works while also making sure all appropriate controls measures are in place and implemented and ensure workers have an up-to-date Safe Pass card and appropriate construction skills certification scheme cards where applicable. You must also investigate all accidents and report any accident to the HSA where an employee cannot perform their normal work for more than three days, excluding the day of the accident. Adequate welfare facilities such as toilets, canteen and changing rooms must be provided and maintained and you must ensure that the construction site is secure to prevent unauthorized access. If you become aware of no appointments having been made, you must inform the client and where there are more than twenty persons on site or thirty persons employed in construction work, you must appoint a safety officer. In addition to the duties already mentioned, if you are working on a project where a project supervisor construction stage has been appointed, there are further duties that you must adhere to, such as: Complying with the directions of the project supervisor construction stage. Complying with parts of the construction stage safety and health plan relevant to your work. Providing the project supervisor construction stage with information required in writing for the safety file, for example, as-built drawings, manufacturers' instructions or location and markings of significant services and ensuring your employees comply with all site rules and the safety and health plan. Visit hsa.ie or bsmart.ie for more information.
Safety Statement. The Safety, Health and Welfare Act 2005 requires that every organisation produce a safety statement to safeguard the safety and health of employees while they work and of other people who might be at the workplace, including customers, visitors and members of the public. The safety statement represents a commitment to their safety and health. It should state how the employer will ensure their safety and health and state the resources necessary to maintain and review safety and health laws and standards. It is essential to write down the safety statement and put in place the arrangements needed to implement and monitor it. The safety statement must be made available to staff and anyone else showing that hazards have been identified and the risks assessed and eliminated or controlled. Your safety statement must be reviewed annually and the policy statement signed and dated by senior management. Training Requirements. You must have a minimum of a Safe Pass and manual handling training to work on a Longford County Council project. Do not carry out works such as mounting and raising wheel, erecting or altering scaffolding or operating plant or machinery if you do not have the correct training. Training records must be up-to-date and available for inspection in your site safety folder. PPE Requirements. Mandatory or required PPE on all Longford County Council housing projects are: Safety boots, safety helmet and a high-vis vest or jacket. Task-specific PPE may also be required depending on the works being completed. They may include dust mask, gloves or safety glasses. This will be documented in your risk assessment or method statement for the works being carried out. Site Entrance Requirements. Use the sign-in book to sign in and out of site when you arrive and before you leave each day. Covid-19 information will be on display and sanitizers will be available. Please use these regularly. Safety Management System folders will be set up and you must have your Safety Management System folder available for inspection daily. Emergency numbers and first aiders on site will be on display. First aid box, in-service fire extinguisher will be available and an assembly point sign will be erected. Safety Management System. As part of Longford County Council's Safety Management System, all contractors working on housing projects must have a safety folder available for inspection on site daily. The contents of this folder will include: Your company's safety statement, risk assessments and method statements, accident and incident report forms, the training records of those working on site, any toolbox talks you've completed and your daily or weekly inspection forms such as GA2 forms, AF3 or GA3 forms. Emergency Response. An assembly point sign will be erected on site. Please make yourself aware of this location on each site. In the event of a fire, the alarm must be raised and go to the assembly point immediately. Do not return to the area until confirmed by your supervisor or the emergency services it is safe to do so. Spill kits must be available for any chemical spillage. In the event of an accident or incident, the supervisor must be made aware as soon as possible followed by your point of contact in Longford County Council. An accident or incident report form must be completed. Welfare Facilities. With regard to Covid-19, please ensure there is a two-metre distance between each person in the canteen. Brakes may need to be staggered to facilitate this. Wash your hands or use wipes before eating, drinking or smoking. Keep the area clean and tidy and dispose of all waste correctly to avoid attracting rodents. In this section, we will go through some common site hazards and controls. These will include: Site security, slip strips and falls, silica dust, plant machinery and equipment, working at height, scaffolding, hot works, excavations, underground services, overhead lines, electricity, manual handling, biological hazards, asbestos, fills disease and Covid-19. Site Security. Health and safety signage will be erected outside the gate to site to warn of construction works. You must sign in and out of site daily as must any visitors who may come to site. The site perimeter will be secured by Harris fencing or hoarding and you must ensure to close the gate after you enter or leave or receive a delivery to prevent unauthorized access. Remove keys from outplanting equipment when not in use and ensure the tools and equipment are locked away securely at the end of the day or when leaving site. Slip, trips and falls. A good standard of housekeeping must be maintained at all times. All access regress routes must be kept clear. You are responsible for your work area ensuring that a general cleanup of the area takes place on a regular basis. Waste must be disposed of as soon as possible. Cables must not create a slip, trip or fall hazard. Fire escape routes or emergency exits and emergency equipment must be kept clear at all times. All slips, trips or falls should be reported to your supervisor as soon as possible. Silica Dust. Silica is a major constituent of construction materials such as bricks, tiles, concrete and mortar. Dust is generated from these materials during many common construction tasks such as cutting, drilling, grinding and polishing. Heavy and prolonged exposure to silica dust can cause lung cancer and other serious respiratory diseases. To help prevent the exposure to silica dust, maintain good housekeeping at all times while the job is in progress. If relevant, pre-dampen the works area to help minimize dust. Always use water suppression when operating consoles and brace wheels. Where possible, move the item, material or equipment to be worked on to an open, well-ventilated area. Use tools or equipment with a dust extraction system where possible. Consider the use of portable extraction equipment. Protective clothing, goggles, face masks in some cases gloves must be worn. And always remember other workers in the area. They may also require protection. Plant machinery and equipment. Do not operate plant or machinery without the correct training. Ensure GA1 certificate is in date and available for inspection. Carry out a weekly GA2 inspection and note any defects in all plant and lifting gear. Ensure auxiliary devices such as mirrors, CCTV, beacons, movement alarms, seat belts are on good working order daily. Do not walk directly behind or alongside plant machinery or vehicles. Always get the driver's attention first. Seat belts must be worn. Lifting gear such as slings, chains, block rabs must be certified by a competent person every six months and cert available and a tag in place. No mobile phone usage while operating plant or machinery on site. Remove the key from the ignition when not in use. A spotter must be in place when vehicles are reversing or delivery vehicles are arriving or leaving site. A site traffic management plan must be followed at all times and relevant signee directed. Observe the site's speed limit, ten kilometres per hour. Working at Height. GA3 inspection form must be filled out weekly for all work at height equipment. Report any defects and remove from use if applicable. Only use approved work at height equipment. Do not improvise with other equipment. Ladders are for only short duration, low-risk works, less than thirty minutes. Ladders must be tied or footed when in use. Do not overreach, always maintain three points of contact. Platforms, trestles must be sufficient dimensions to allow safe passage and safe use of equipment and materials and they must have adequate access and fall protection. They must be free from trips, hazards or gaps through which persons or material could fall. They must be fitted with boards, toeboards and handrails. Boards used will be of equal length. They must be kept clean and tidy and not to be overloaded. They must be erected on firm, level ground to ensure equipment remains stable during use and platforms must be erected and inspected by a competent person and inspected before each use and weekly while on site. Scaffolding. Scaffolding can only be erected or altered by a qualified person with the CSCS card. Weekly inspections must be carried out and after adverse weather conditions or major alterations. Do not access scaffolding unless tagged and safe for use. Safe working load signage must be clearly displayed on loading bays and it must not be overloaded. Gates must be in place on loading bays. Keep walkways free of trip hazards. Avoid using scaffolding in adverse weather conditions. It is an offence to interfere with scaffolding. Hot Works. Hot works is an activity or process that generates a source of ignition. This could be through a flame, heat or spark. Example, drilling, cutting, grinding. If hot works can be carried out off-site or externally, this should be done. If this is not an option, the following controls should be in place. A fire extinguisher must be available next to the works. Use a designated area to carry out all hot works as far as possible. Ensure all flammable items are removed from the immediate area. Correct PPE must be worn, example gloves and safety glasses. Fire watch should be carried out for thirty minutes after the works has been completed. Excavations. All underground services must be located prior to works commencing. A visual inspection must be carried out daily when persons are working in excavations and at least once every seven days and noted on an AF3. Batter accept the sides and ends to a safe angle. Ensure there is a suitable access point. Vehicles or items of plant must remain at a suitable distance from an excavation. Keep equipment, materials, piles and soil gripped or stacked at a safe distance from the edge of the excavation to prevent collapse. Fence or secure all excavations where it can be accessible in public areas to prevent pedestrians and vehicles falling in. Ensure excavations do not affect the footings of scaffolds or the foundations of nearby structures. Water buildup in excavation should be removed with pumps to prevent flooding. Where possible, excavation should be backfilled at the end of the working day. Underground Services. CSCS training is required to use a CAT scan. Scan the ground and consult maps before any works commence. Mark location of underground services and carry out trial holds. Electricity cables, gas pipes, water pipes and sewers, if damaged, may pose a direct danger to personnel who are working on the site. When working near buried services, use the following: Maps, CAT scan, safe digging practices and company policy and procedure when carrying out works on underground services. All four complement each other and will reduce the risks. Working in proximity to overhead electrical cables. Display warning signage, a no-tip zone spread on the road and gold posts with bunting must be erected. Electricity. All 220 power tools must be removed. Step-down transformers to be used to support 110-volt power tools. Generators must not be kept inside. Extension leads must be fully unrolled when in use. Ensure leads are not causing a trip hazard. Raise off the floor where possible. Check all cables, plugs, wiring sockets regularly for damage. Report any defects. Do not attempt to repair unless by a competent person. Do not overload any sockets. Switch off all electrical appliances before leaving the premises. Where one socket is kept live for use within a house, this must be clearly identified. Manual Handling. Think before you lift. Ask yourself, is it necessary to handle this load? Is there any other means of lifting? Example, mechanical equipment. Should it divide the load, making smaller lifts? Does this lift need more than one person to act safely? Are there environmental aspects of the workplace suitable for lifting tasks? And check the distance the load is from the body. Will it involve stretching or overreaching?
By following simple, safer manual handling techniques, you should be able to lift most loads within the workplace. You should ensure you are fit enough to complete activities where the loads are heavy. If you feel uncomfortable while lifting or handling a load, you should stop immediately. You should use a mechanical aid, seek assistance or speak to your employer.
Back movement within our comfortable range of movement shouldn't be a problem for us. However, when we're handling loads and particularly heavy loads, we should try and maintain our back in a good posture. Forward bending and twisting when handling loads are most likely to cause a problem. Backward bending when handling loads above shoulder height can also be a problem. The muscles that are best designed to lift or push and pull loads are the muscles on the front of your thigh, your quadriceps muscles. These are a very strong muscle group ideally suited for manual handling activities.
There are eight principles of safer manual handling. One. Think before you lift. Complete an initial assessment using tile to ensure you are capable of handling the load safely. Two. Adopt a stable base. Position your feet apart. Adopt an astride stance for lifting and a walk stance for pushing and pulling movements. Three. Get a good grip. Ensure you have a firm grip with the palm of your hand. Use handles where available and keep your elbows tucked in. Four. Keep the load close to your waist. This will ensure you are stable because the load is close to your centre of gravity. Five. Bend your knees. This allows you to use your leg muscles to power the lift. Six. Adopt good back posture. Maintain the normal curves in your back and face forwards. Seven. Move your feet. Do not bend and twist your back when lifting loads. Move your feet to turn with the load. Eight. Move smoothly with your head up. Smooth movements will allow the soft tissues to adapt to movements and holding your head in the upright position will put your spine in a good posture. We are now going to look at a technique for lifting and carrying loads and for pushing and pulling loads. Lifting a load can strain your back and knees if carried out incorrectly. Safer lifting techniques involve keeping the load close to your body and near your centre of gravity. Let's have a look at a technique for lifting a load. Assess the load. Set your feet apart for balance. Get close to the load. Get a firm grip. Bend your knees. Keep your back upright. Lift with your legs. Following these steps when lifting a load will help you move loads more safely and comfortably.
Asbestos. In some housing projects, asbestos may be present in spray coating and steelwork, concrete wall and ceilings for fire protection and insulation, insulation lagging on pipework and for boilers and ducts, asbestos insulating boards such as asbestos looks and marinate used as wall partitions, fire doors, ceiling tiles etc. Asbestos cement products such as sheavings and wall and roofs, tiles, cold water tanks, gutters, pipes and indecorative plaster finishes. Asbestos bitchinless products such as roofing felt, gutter linings, damp-proof courses, mastics and adhesive used for floor tiles and wall coverings. Prior to commencement of any work with asbestos, a specialist contractor must be consulted if the work activity is likely to result in exposure to asbestos fibers. An asbestos risk assessment specific to the work area must be completed prior to commencement of works with asbestos. Fills disease, also known as leptospirosis, is a serious and sometimes fatal infection that is transmitted to humans by contact with urine from rats. Symptoms include flu-like illness with a persistent and severe headache. This can lead to vomiting and muscle pain and ultimately to jaundice meningitis and kidney failure. In some cases, the disease may be fatal. You can get infected when the bacteria can get into your body through cuts and scratches and through the lining of the mouth, nose, throat and eyes after contact with infected urine or contaminated water. To help prevent infection, report any instance of vermin on site. Don't trust rats with unprotected hands. Wash cuts and grazes immediately with soap and water and cover all cuts and broken skin with waterproof plasters before enjoying work. Wear protective clothing. Wash your hands before eating, drinking or smoking. Avoid contact with static bodies of water. And if you have any symptoms, contact your supervisor and go to a doctor. Leptospirosis is much less severe if it is treated promptly. Biological Hazards. Any person who may be potentially exposed to biological hazards through contact with infected animals and human waste products such as blood, mucus, vomit, urine, feces as well as items inappropriately disposed of such as syringes, nappies, condoms etc. should be aware and comply with control measures. Good personal hygiene practices are the most important element in controlling infection. Work areas including surfaces and equipment should be cleaned regularly and contaminated equipment stored separately. Avoid entering overgrown vegetation or contact with wooded areas. Wear clothing that covers the skin where possible. Cuts and broken skin should be covered with waterproof plasters before work tasks. Protective disposable gloves to be worn. Persons should avoid smoking, rubbing their noses... Persons should avoid smoking, rubbing their noses, mouths or eyes during such work associated with biological hazards. If a needle stick occurs, the medical intention must be sought immediately and reported to your supervisor and Longford County Council. PPE to provide and worn including puncture-resistant gloves where there is risk from needles or sharps. Dealing with sharps, never handle sharps directly. Use a litter picker, wear sharp's gloves and discard needles into sharp's boxes. Covid nineteen. Covid nineteen is a new illness that can affect your lungs and airways. It is caused by a virus called coronavirus. It is spread in sneeze or cough droplets and you could get the virus if you come in contact with someone who has the virus and is coughing or sneezing or touching surfaces that someone who has the virus has coughed and sneezed on and bring your unwashed hands to your face. The symptoms include cough, any kind of cough, usually dry but not always, high fever over thirty-eight degrees, shortness of breath or difficulty breathing. It can take up to fourteen days for symptoms to appear. If you are feeling unwell or displaying symptoms, immediately self-isolate and make phone contact with your GP and your supervisor. Persons displaying symptoms should telephone their GP or the HSE help line and follow the advice received. Protection against Covid nineteen. The most important points to remember are: hand hygiene, wash your hands well and frequently; cough etiquette, always cough or sneeze into your elbow or into a clean tissue; dispose of any tissues appropriately; clean and disinfect surfaces frequently; avoid unnecessary contacts such as shaking hands; physical distancing, maintain two metre distance from others at all times and if this is not possible, make sure you're wearing the correct PPE. Covid nineteen symptoms, self-isolation and close contact. To protect you, your colleagues and family, it is essential that if you, one, have any symptoms of Covid nineteen or if you feel unwell before enjoying work, or two, have been in close contact with a confirmed Covid nineteen case, you must immediately self-isolate at home, make phone contact with your GP and supervisor and follow the advice that is issued. Thank you for completing the Longford County Council Health and Safety Induction for Contractors 2021. You must now complete the short questionnaire via the link which accompanied this PowerPoint presentation. Each person must complete the questionnaire and once complete, you will be generated a cert which you can download and keep in your safety folder as evidence of completion. If you have any other questions on any safety requirements, please contact the Longford County Council Health and Safety Department or any member of the Longford County Council housing team for further information.